This is the non-echo version. Welcome to the march.
Turn your speaker volume down. On your computer.
I can't do that. I just muted it.
Then mute your microphone. Okay, try.
Okay. I'm gonna try. I'm gonna try. Sorry, there's a bad echo. Sorry, there's a bad echo. Should I turn that off? Oh.
You should have actual speaker volume.
It's on. Well.
No, not.
I don't know where my speaker goes. This didn't happen last time.
Can everyone else hear?
We hear you.
My condolences.
Someone muted again.
What's that?
Someone's laptop muted again.
Yeah.
So I...
She must have muted.
I just muted. Is that okay now?
Yes.
I'm still getting feedback.
Her speaker on her computer still.
Is it loud or deep?
I've got a... No. Okay, great.
That's better.
Oh, it is.
Well, I didn't have any problem with this last time.
Beautiful. There we go.
What'd you do?
Hold up menu. There was your audio right there.
Okay.
And I just muted it.
Thank you so much. Oh, perfect. Ta-da.
We'll add it at that point. We want to start again.
Good afternoon and welcome to the May 13th meeting of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome everybody who's viewing us remotely and note that we have three supervisors who are joining us via Zoom. That would be Elliot Abrams, Pam Robb, and Anita Tease. In addition, we have various staff members, people making a presentation, who will also be joining us. I'd also like to point out that the public is very welcome to make comments, and the best way to make a comment is the phone number, which is listed in front of where Dan Trevino is sitting. If you could just point that out, Dan. Anyway, just call in that 814-996-4260. It's listed there. So, welcome. I would like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would, at this point, like to invite the public to make any comments if they have interest in speaking on something that is not on our agenda. I guess we have had no phone calls, so no emails. So we'll move on. Whoops. Sorry about that. We're going to start with presentations. We've got a presentation from the Center of Volunteers in Medicine, but before we do that, I'm actually going to ask Supervisor Robb if she would introduce this item. She was the main instigator.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. At the April 22nd meeting of the Board of Supervisors, I made a suggestion that the Patent Township can donate to workers from the front line of the COVID-19 crisis to show our appreciation for all they do. When I reached out to the board members with your suggestions, Anita Tease recommended center volunteers in medicine, CBIIM. Dan Trevino, a volunteer for CBIIM, invited a representative from the Central Volunteer Division to our next year to make a presentation about the organization. Dan, would you introduce Representative from CBIIM?
The Director of Development is blocking my name. Doug, help me out. Monica. Monica Wright. Thank you, Monica. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Senior moment there. You know, I get a lot of them frequently these days. Monica Wright, Director of Development for Center of Volunteers in Medicine. As you could imagine, for any kind of a health caregiving organization in this pandemic time, they have certainly been very stressed trying to meet the safety and protection needs of all the clinic staff and as well as figuring out ways to serve their patients safely. So, Monica, would you go ahead and give us a brief presentation?
Sure, sure. Is my... Are my powerpoints up there?
No, let me see if I can...
Okay. While you're doing that...
You'll have to do it from your end.
It's up on my end.
Try it again. There it comes. Okay.
Is that up?
There, you're good now. Yep.
Okay, good. Well, you did a great job introducing me, so I'm going to skip the first slide. Hopefully. There we go. So, basically what we are is we're a free volunteer clinic that services public with the, who do not have insurance, open income, and basically all Center County residents access us to healthcare. Our mission, which we live by, is CBIIM will serve and advocate for the medically uninsured residents of Center County. So that's basically what we do every single day. I'm just going to go through a little couple statistics here. Nationwide, what we have is... Hold on a minute. Okay. Eighty-three percent of patients actually come from working household, which is kind of a thing that most people don't understand or don't realize. And then we have free and charitable clinics nationwide have seen a 40% patient demand since 2012. Now, how does that relate to Center County? What our numbers show is that more than, almost 13,000 people, almost 8% medically uninsured people, live here in Center County. Real quick, I have a question for you. Do you guys hear an echo?
No.
No.
Okay. Because I hear everything I'm saying after I talk.
Yes, we're hearing it. We're hearing the echo.
I am hearing it. Can we persevere through it, or should we try to fix it?
Is it any better now? Is it better now?
Continue your presentation. Let's check it out. We've made a little bit of adjustment at this end.
Okay. Oh, it sounds much better over here, I think.
Okay, sounds like it worked.
Actually, there's still a little bit there, but it's not too bad. And here in Center County, we have 38,100 estimated dentally uninsured. So, our need here in Center County is very critical for our clinic to stay open and serve these individuals. And this information actually came from, I think it's Mountainet Knee Health that came with the 2019 Community Health Needs Assessment. So it's very recent, it's very current, it's very local. Eligibility for our patient base is, first, they have to live or work in Center County. Their family income must be about, at least 250% below the poverty level. And what that actually turns out to be is, for an individual, they have to make $3,350 or less a year. And for a family of four, around $63,000 or less a year to qualify. They also have to have no insurance and no dental insurance. What we do is, we service patient care in five critical areas, which is the primary medical care. Basically, your family doctor, your preventative care appointments for urgent care, weapons health, that type of stuff. We have primary dental care, and that includes evaluations, extraction, restorative work, and dental hygiene. And we've just recently introduced a program where we're going to start building dentures. So that's brand new. The case management is, as it sounds, we work on eligibility, who's actually eligible for these services. The medication assistance program, that's a good one there, because what that gives patients is free, completely free... Oh, and by the way, all of our services are at no cost to the patient. None. They receive drugs, insulin, that sort of thing, at no cost. And we obtain those drugs from indigent drug programs, and we purchase them at reduced rate from different wholesalers. So that's what we offer that. And our newest program that we're doing, last year was a pilot study for it. This year, we got guaranteed funding again, is behavioral health, and that basically is what it sounds like, talking about psychological disorders and connecting patients with different doctors, referrals, that sort of thing. So, if you look at CBIIM by the numbers, and to kind of get an understanding of what we actually do and how important we are for Center County, is we have almost 1,500 medical clinic visits a year in the 2018-2019 year. We had almost 2,400 dental visits, 578 case management visits, and 4,000 prescriptions filled. And then also, I didn't include it here because I didn't know the exact number, but we have about 60 behavioral health patients currently receiving services. As far as who serves these individuals? Well, it's all volunteers. We do have staff, but, you know, the critical care comes from our volunteers. And right now, we have, in the year 2018-2020, and it's the same this year, we have 10 dental providers, 27 medical, numerous pharmacists, behavioral health, dental techs, nurses, and these individuals all come in and offer their services free of charge at no cost to us as well. Grand total, we have 233 volunteers that donated over, like, almost 10,600 hours in that year. I'm not going to go through all this right now, but I just want to explain very quickly that our funding is, we get almost zero dollars for federal or state funding. We obtain our funding from direct contact with individual donors, corporations. We also get a considerable amount of money from grants, contracted services, and as you can see, maybe not on this chart, a lot of our equipment and referrals are in kind. So, and we do all of this with no revenue from patients and no government and state funding. So, that leads me to this last part that we're still learning right now, is the COVID effect, COVID-19. I added this new slide because I just got new dated just today. So, obviously, you know, we've remained open the whole entire time. We do have reduced staff, where we have about eight, five to eight people in from 8:30 to 12:30. From 1 o'clock, I can come in, and I can stay as long as I want. And there's about five of us that do that in the afternoon. And we have a 22... I think we have a total of 22 full-time staff. So you can see how the numbers have reduced. Many staff are working from home. When we're not in the building, we're working from home. We've seen a 31%... These are the numbers I just got today. We've seen a 31% increase in new eligibility patients just since March 16th. Real numbers, we've seen 32 increased patients who qualify for services and are currently receiving services in that eight-week, nine-week time period, where we only typically see about one to two new patients a week. So as you can see, it's over a 30% increase. And of course, as you can imagine, that's going to be due to people losing their jobs. And that's the number one reason. And that's, that's the number one reason right there. So, I'll get to that in just a minute. What we've done to kind of combat these issues is we've introduced telemedicine. Some of you may have already experienced it. I know I have once. And I had to get the COVID test because my executive director would not let me come back cuz I ran a fever, negative so far. So we take it very seriously. We, in, through introducing, one positive effect that's come out of COVID-19 is that our no-show rate has gone significantly down. So, so that's a very big positive. And I'm sure the medical scene has seen this, you know, this repercussion from this as well. What we're considering doing right now, adding, of course, we don't currently have funding for it, we're trying to get funding for it, is adding COVID-19 testing. And in addition to that, if the antibodies are ever produced, we'll be administering this as well. Bottom line, as you can imagine, this has significantly affected fundraising across the board for every single nonprofit that we have. I go out, I talk to people. I build those relationships. How do I do that? Talking to people face-to-face. You, you know, for the, just this week, I'm allowed to actually, well, come here cuz I work here, but go out, you know, still can't see people, can't talk, can't ask for money. So what we've done to try to work through that is, some of the things that we've included is social media. We really target social media. We had a GoFundMe campaign for P P E. Just, it just ended last week. We were able to raise twelve thousand one hundred two dollars, so we're very, very happy with that. Because the other byproduct, I can't meet with people, but we also can't fundraise. So we've lost our cornhole tournament. More than likely, we're gonna end up losing our cycling. We're gonna try to do a virtual cycle. We're gonna see how that works out. What else? We have Marathoners for Medicine coming up. That's another big one. But our biggest fundraiser for the whole year, and I'm sure many of you have been, have attended, is Battle of the Mines. That's four hundred people at the Penn Stater altogether. At this point, I absolutely do not see that happening. So we're looking into, we contacted a couple companies. We're looking into virtual Battle of the Mines. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that, find out, but that's what we're doing. And, and we're learning. We're trying to learn as much as we can, how can we virtually fundraise? How can we ask people for money, corporations for money, for sustainability, to offer these services under these conditions? So it's, it's been a learning, learning process for us, you know? It's something we didn't anticipate, we didn't budget for. So as you can imagine, of course, I'm asking for money now that I have a captured audience. And I, I just wanna say, anything that anybody can do to help, pass the word. We're, we're looking for that. And my last comment before I let you go, I know I'm almost out of time, is, today is the last day for Center Gives. I'm sure most of you are aware of that. We have currently brought in over seventy-five thousand dollars, according to their website. Last year, at the end of the campaign, we brought in twenty-four, or twenty-nine thousand. So we're very excited for that accomplishment. Unfortunately, it's a positive effect from the COVID, COVID-19, but hey, we'll take it, you know? And our, our power hour is from seven to eight P M, so if any of you are interested in helping individually, we would appreciate that. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Monica. That's certainly commendable what you're doing under the circumstances, which, which we're all dealing with in various ways. So it is, we, we all rise to the occasion, but sometimes it feels overwhelming. So thank you. I would, since Pam Robb was the one who brought up this idea of saying thank you to our medical professional and other volunteers who are on the front lines, I'm gonna ask her, if she has any questions, comments, the rest of the board, and then when it comes time to make a, a motion, I'll, I'll have Pam make that motion. So Pam, do you have any questions or comments, or anyone else from the board?
No, I think Monica hit it on the head, and it's an outstanding organization. And I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing the rest of my board members.
Dan, Elliot, Anita, any comments, questions?
Elliot.
Oh, I'm, you know what? I forget to look up. It's okay if you say me, or say Elliot, say Betsy, Elliot wants to, Ellie.
This is a great organization, and I believe we should make a contribution.
Anita, any comments? I'm, I don't know.
Yes, I second what Elliot has said, and I am thankful to Supervisor Robb for initiating this effort to support such a worthy organization. I was very struck in reading the materials about how, because people have now lost their jobs, they've lost their health insurance.
Right.
And I think it's very commendable that there's now some resources that can help them in this double whammy that they are experiencing.
Right.
So excellent presentation, and I support entirely what Supervisor Robb will be proposing.
Great. Pam, are you ready to make a motion?
Yes, I am. I move that Penn Township donate one thousand dollars to the work on the frontline of COVID-19 to the C D I M organization.
I'll second the motion.
Great. Any other further discussion? Probably not. Seeing none, I call for the question, those in favor of the motion to donate a thousand dollars to Center Volunteers in Medicine, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we are proud to make that donation. And I think Pam, you also had a closing word to say.
Yes, this donation is given with a heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for all the many ways that you protect our community. We all say thank you to you and all your staff.
We are eternally grateful and thank you.
Yes.
From all of the staff and our board members.
And thank you for the presentation. And if there's some way that we could make that transfer between seven and eight tonight, is that your power hour, Monica?
Yes, it is. Oh, that would be wonderful.
I will try to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Doug will try and do that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm actually having trouble keeping my gallery view here.
That's cuz I keep switching.
Oh, great, now I know what you're saying.
Elliot had something he wanted to say.
Elliot, did you wanna say something also?
Well, Bonnie and I would like to match the township's contribution, just so that we don't think that neither of you has to contribute.
Wow.
Fantastic.
That's phenomenal. Thank you, Elliot.
I have tears in my eyes right now. I really do.
Monica, I, my wife and I have already made a donation. We, we make our donations through a charitable foundation, so it won't be coming to you through Center Gives, but you will be getting it.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And I made a very modest contribution to Center Gives, nowhere nearly on the scale, Mr. Abrams. Thank you.
Thank you. And honestly, on behalf of the staff, our volunteers, our board, our volunteer doctors and nurses and entire medical staff, we gratefully thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for all you do. Okay, we're gonna move on to our esteemed police chief, who's somewhere in Zoom land.
He's upstairs.
Oh, Chief Jolly.
Yes, sir.
He's gonna be making our safety report. Our public safety report, sorry.
Yep, coming to you from my office.
All right.
Materials contain my public safety report for April twenty-twenty. First thing you'll probably notice is a lot of our numbers definitely dipped way down for the month here in the police department. I did instruct our officers to limit traffic stops and traffic activity for our, doing our part to help prevent the spread of the virus, to just very serious traffic offenses. So we did only have nine traffic stops, wrote five citations, didn't have any parking tickets, but then had nine criminal arrests for the month of April. However, we did see a very large increase in the amount of bike activity. I did ask our bike officers to heavily patrol and to make our presence known in the parks, especially. They did about a hundred miles, did a hundred and seventy-one business checks, and did five, handled five incidents. Mainly in the parks, we were looking to make sure that individuals were respecting social distancing, staying off of any of the equipment, and then also, we did have to break up a few basketball games and cookouts that were in violation of those types of things. Really appreciate the bike officer's efforts this month. They really did a good job of helping control the activity in the parks. Some of the department notes, in the middle of page one, we had a couple individuals who were arrested for retail thefts on two separate occasions, stealing beverages from a local store here in the township. Six individuals total were arrested for retail theft in the month of April. We also had a forty-nine-year-old male who was arrested for theft and receiving stolen property. This occurred, it was an incident in Park Forest where he removed a package that was delivered to a residence from Porch. And our officers did a really fantastic job of tracking him down and returning the property to the right owner very quickly. And we'll discuss that here in one second, a couple pages from now, a little further. Community relations for April, we actually have the unique opportunity on page two to participate in a graduation parade for six graduates from LifeLink PSU. If you're not familiar with that program, their mission statement basically says they provide college area's school district special needs students between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one with an opportunity to interact with students of a grown age in an environment that is socially and academically conducive to continue to grow. The school district came to us and said, generally, every year, they have a very nice graduation ceremony and a dinner for the families of these graduates. And we're trying to come up with some kind of special way to recognize their accomplishment of graduating from this program. And we were happy to oblige and to put one of our vehicles in and also gave them a gift of a coffee mug with the township emblem on it, so they were very appreciative of that. But two of the six graduates actually lived in that township. So we felt it was a great way for us to participate and give back to the community. And there's a nice photo of a portion of the parade, that's not the whole parade, that you can see our car, the third vehicle back there. On the page three, it was an email I received in reference to the Porch theft that I talked about in department notes. It was a thank you letter from our victim that was sent basically to Officer Finocha, but also the other officers who were with him that evening. The victim really was impressed by the detective work that Officer Finocha did to track down the suspect and also to return her property again to her in a pretty quick manner. And I don't know if you pick it up or not, but in the letter, our victim actually is FBI agent here in the local office. So she, but she was very appreciative, felt that was also very lucky to work with this officer, to live in an area where she knows that she's very well-served and protected by these departments. We appreciate her taking the time to share that letter with us. On page four is a letter that brought this up back in January. We did an event, Officer Basala hosted a Girl Scout troop, and it's called Coco with Cops. And they were very appreciative of the visit, so it was just a real quick letter thanking us for, for our time and efforts with that program. Our report, as far as training and activities, very bleak. Pretty much all trainings that we have that were in-person trainings were canceled. The Board of Chiefs did vote to allow the tactical response team to begin in-person training at the end of April, though, just to make sure that they're keeping their tactics up to speed. So we made sure that they were back out in person and have, have continued to train as of actually yesterday again. Basically, all the meetings I attend were all via Zoom, so we did the Center County Chiefs meeting, the Community and Campus Immunity meeting, and many, many, many different COVID-19 meetings throughout the month of April. The last six pages is our record call list from our record management system. You'll see that we had a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-two calls. That's down from three-hundred-and-twenty-seven in March. Of those, the most common call that we had was our request for assistances, which is fifty-one, a count of fifty-one of the two-hundred-and-ninety-two. And just to give you a little perspective, of the fifty-one requests for assistance, seventeen were related to COVID-type calls. Those were anywhere from individuals or employees not wearing masks in some of our businesses, prior to construction activities, reopening, people with either calls that we received about construction projects that were continuing against the governor's order, and then general social distancing type things. So that's all I have in my report. Again, April was a very quiet month with the police department. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I do have a real quick update on the traffic situation, if there's no questions, so.
Well, once again, thanks for your grace under pressure, as we are all doing, especially your transition to the bike team. I think that's really a nice approach. And I shared this story, I'm not sure if I did it here, but at one of the committees, the recreational advisory committee, people were concerned about groups congregating in the parks. I shared your story about me notifying you through an associate that there were a couple of groups playing basketball and then went tennis. We put an officer on a bike, went over and talked to them. So I, I think it's, it's not perfect. We can't be everywhere at once, but I think it's a firm but gentle way of delivering an important message. So thank you.
Yeah, we really like utilizing a bike patrol for that exact type of situation. It's really good to get them out and get them into the public. At this point, keeping our appropriate distance distancing, they're, they're very approachable when on a bike, though.
Yeah, it is. What's not to like about a bike, right?
That's correct.
Great. Any questions for Chief Jolly, anybody? Salutes.
You wanna touch on the traffic?
Oh, great, thanks.
Were you gonna follow up on Chick-fil-A, or?
Yeah, yes. Briefly, I just wanted to give you an update. So, William, a week and a half ago, we're receiving a lot of complaints about traffic back here at the Avenue Street, particularly from Chick-fil-A and from the Starbucks complex there. We started the intervention of traffic control at both locations last Thursday, May seventh. And there definitely was a very large traffic issue, vehicles blocking at least the way when you're traveling down Avenue Street, heading southbound in towards town. The property owners for Starbucks property noticed us there on last Thursday, and they made a comment to me that they were gonna provide traffic control, which they did. They have flaggers on that. And as of today, they still have at least one person there flagging, which has definitely remedied that, that issue. It still gets backed up close to the grave, but I don't know that we had it blocking a lane of travel at the location. So that, the, the traffic control has definitely been very helpful there. However, the Starbucks issue has, has continued on. And we, this, this week, I've started putting overtime detail together. We have one officer covering from about eleven A M to two P M, which is kind of the peak time, obviously, the lunch hour, but it's, it's, just the volume of traffic or trying to come into the, the way that the drive-through is set up currently, it just cannot handle the volume that they're, they're seeing right now. We did find that we blocked off the left end and out. So essentially, if you're coming up northbound on Avenue, trying to make a left turn from Avenue into Chick-fil-A, you're blocking that so that you cannot access it from that, that direction. And also, customers, easy, not letting them make a left turn crossing over the lanes of Avenue, forcing them to make a right so that they're heading backwards town, has helped out a little. It hasn't fixed the problem, but it's helped, it's helped a little. Yesterday, Mr. Erickson and I went down to the property, spoke with the business owner, discussed some of the issues, and basically, the fact that it's a safety issue that we have vehicles stopped and backed out into North Avenue Street, and offered a few interest solutions, so we are working with him. He was receptive to what we had to say. He said he's mentioned a couple of different remedies that he's trying to, to put into it as well. And I believe Mr. Erickson, I'm sure could, but I think he reached out to him. And I believe Mr. Erickson, I'm sure could go further, but I think he reached out to PennDOT today about some of those. A new traffic pattern was attempted today and suggested in the light. It seemed to work out pretty good. We kind of roped it down a little bit, parking a little bit. That seemed to work, so hopefully we'll continue to work on that and making sure that we will beat all the traffic off of Avenue. But just to update you, as of right now, we have 16 hours of overtime dedicated to tracking traffic at that location since this past Thursday, May 17th. Some of that, again, has been overtime and a small portion that has been overtime time vehicles. So just wanted to kind of bring you up on that issue. It's been an ongoing traffic issue, but hopefully we'll work towards a resolution on it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. The sound in here is not the greatest, but we got most of it, so. If anybody has any questions, I can help translate. It's getting a little better. They're trying to work on something. We're got another idea, maybe work with PennDOT. They've been receptive so far, but we'll keep, we'll keep working on it until we get, until we get it fixed, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's nice to see Chick-fil-A doing a lot of business, but creates a safety issue out on Avenue Street. Okay.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm, yes. Yes, Supervisor T.
In these situations where a private business is requiring staff time from the police department, is there any, do they make a contribution? I mean, this is costing the township not only money for the police people, but it's diverting police resources to help a private business manage their traffic.
Well, we're not managing their traffic. We're managing the traffic on the public roadway to make it safe. So we are, when needed, we will tell people they cannot turn into that business. We will tell them they can't stop and stay on Avenue. We'll send them past the intersection. So we're not managing their traffic, we're managing the traffic on Avenue. We have the option of billing them probably. We'd like to see if we, they can come up with something internal to do, so we'll keep working with them. It's, it's an option, we just haven't exercised it yet.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions, comments from the board? Oh, I see a hand waving, Mr. Abrams.
I agree with Anita, and I also understand the explanation that it's possible that one of the two places might want to donate some coffee to the police department.
That would be great, certainly from Starbucks.
Yeah, they, they appreciate, they appreciate everything we've done for them. They'd like to see, they'd like to fix it, too, without having to, I mean, it's, there's a danger for us to put an officer out in the middle of the road, which is what we'd really like to avoid, so. That's our main motive. I mean, keeping traffic safe on Avenue is the first motivation. If we have to put somebody out there, we'd rather, we'd want them out there for as little time, as little time as possible.
In the future, we should keep this in mind when we approve developments that have drive-ins, to make sure that they'll be adequately handled. Now, I know, for example, McDonald's handle it by putting in two places where you can order. At Starbucks, though, I think they would not be able to social distance and keep the place open. There wouldn't be room for enough workers to be there, so it's a tough problem.
Yeah, yeah. And one to keep in mind as we move forward with any other proposed development, as you keep mentioning. Elliot.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the police safety report?
Thank you so much, Officer Jolly. We do not have any items under Public Works. We do have a lot going on in planning and zoning, however. So we are going to have a report from the Planning Commission in the person of Mr. Bob Prosec.
Yeah, he, Bob, he sent us a written report that was distributed with the, with the supplemental information yesterday, and I'll ask Ms. Nicole Pollak to go over that, if you would, Nicole, and I'll find you.
Great.
There you are.
Hi. So we did have our Planning Commission meeting on May 4th. We did discuss, as our next item on our board agenda here, the Benner Township zoning ordinance update. They are submitting their final ordinance. We also talked about the planned airport district and potential amendments to the zoning regulations. We do have a request for proposals that was put out, and we got some responses, but given the public health issues with the COVID-19 outbreak, we are putting that project on hold at this point, and the firms that submitted packets to us were notified that we're going to need to develop a new timeline for this project, once we kind of have a more clear idea of what's going to happen in the future. So then we also talked about getting a trail connected from the PAD area through university lands somewhere to connect to some other parts of town. Township staff, myself, and Trish Meek with the CRPA did have a meeting to talk about some alternatives, and we're working with the planners at Penn State University to discuss some options there, so that is something that's getting a little forward motion. And then we also came up with some new ideas to kind of comprehensively attack the affordable housing issue.
Thank you. I heard that, a presentation you made to the Transportation and Land Use Committee, was that a similar presentation you made to the, to our Planning Commission?
No, that presentation that I gave to the Transportation and Land Use Committee was for my regional project with the CRPA, assessing new opportunities for workforce housing. That was looking at a lot of the newly-built student housing coming online, and whether or not we could maybe try to transition some of the older housing, or some of the housing that maybe would like to pivot their focus to become more affordable housing.
Okay, great. It was a great presentation.
So I mean, it's all in the same vein, but.
Yeah, exactly. I'll have to look at your presentation on, from the Planning Commission. The one you made for TLU was very thorough, very professional.
Thank you. It's the same one I did for the CRPC as well, so if you prefer one meeting the other if you don't have time.
Yep, yeah. Time?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, so that was the report from the Planning Commission, and now we're on to the response to the Benner Township zoning ordinance. And if you could, I guess, I can't keep everything on today. Nicole, if you could, I guess, give a summary of that?
Yes.
Sure.
And then, I guess we have a bunch of questions on that. Let me get my glasses.
Thank you. So, Benner Township started working on redoing their zoning. Last year, they submitted to the township as an adjacent municipality to review for comments. That was in March of 2019. So staff at the time did submit comments, and they did go through our board before they were passed on to Benner. So what I have done was attached the letter that we received this time for the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, their most recent edition of their zoning map. I provided the letter that was submitted last year from the township with the comments made, and then I did a summary of changes when I went through my review, in addition to really looking at the zones that are directly bordering the township and some of the other ways that we'll share resources and traffic and all of those things. Kind of tried to focus on the comments that were previously made to see whether or not they were, how they were addressed, I guess would be the best way to say that. So I kind of wanted to show what the comment was, and then how Benner Township has responded to the comment, more or less. A lot of our comments were addressed, and then I just had two additional comments that I made from that. So I guess if you have specific questions, I can do my best to try to answer them.
The Planning Commission looked at these. They looked over the information that Nicole provided at their meeting, and they had no additional comments. So at this point, it would be if the board had questions or comments that they wanted to add, or just questions that they would like clarification on, we'd look to you.
Any questions, comments?
Yes.
Yes, Anita, I see your hand up.
I have a question. I noted on your write-up, which was excellent, that you mentioned that there is little assurance for the township and other neighboring municipalities that municipal property will not be used in a manner that could generate significant negative impacts on various shared resources. I wondered if you could expand on that a little bit?
It's just more calling out that their, their lack of regulation on themselves could mean any number of things. I mean, we don't really know what they might use their land for, and with it being a little bit more on the vague side, that kind of leaves the door open for them doing things that may or may not negatively impact us, but it's more the vagueness that I was trying to focus on, that we don't know what they could be doing with that land, or how the structures could be placed there if they, if they have very little regulation on themselves on what to do with that land. So that would be a comment that when I draft the official letter to send back to them, that I would make sure that that gets phrased in there, that we don't, that the vagueness of the com, of the verbiage doesn't really assure us of anything. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? I have one, but I'll defer to others first. So my concern is the same as Anita T's is concerned. The other example that stands out to me is the, the lack of any height restrictions in farm, the farming zoning area. I don't know if they would, could put a high-rise up there. I guess that what it comes down to, though, is how does this, how might this impact us? And if there might be any impact, do we handle it on a case-by-case basis? I was a little bit confused about what ability we have to question what's being done in a neighboring municipality or follow.
We have the ability to give them comments of what we think. Other than that, we have hardly any other ability. We, I mean, they have pretty much control of what they want to do with their zoning.
Okay.
So, as do we, ours, so. But no, this is the opportunity where we can provide comments. They will take them into consideration and address them or not.
Okay. So we basically hope for the best, and try not to worry, and be vigilant, as will our neighbors with us. Any, let's see, any, I guess no additional comments, and we just then leave it at that?
Yeah, Nicole will draft a letter, and we'll look that over and send that on them. Thank you.
Yeah, so just, you know, note the concerns that Supervisor T's and I expressed, which you also expressed, that came from your words. Thank you so much, Nicole, that was great.
You're welcome.
Okay. We are now moving to, oh, committee, committee structure, and I can do a little bit of an introduction, and Elliot might also want to add. We were at the meeting when this was introduced. Doug, you can jump in, too. But basically, because of the proposal, because of the work that the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan has generated, and that, that plan was in the, under the aegis of the PSEC, the Public Service and Environmental Committee. Since I served on that committee and on this plan, I can attest that it was a great amount of time and energy, pun not intended, but I'm assuming that's what drove, as they say, the concern for sort of doing some adjustments within the committees. And if the, the Climate Action Adaptation Plan was actually then taken up by a new committee to be called the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee, that would take work away from the Public Services and Environmental Committee, and there's talk of combining the PSEC and Transportation and Land Use, or TLU. So it seems to me those are the three, or the two standing committees that would be directly affected by the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee, but there may be some other adjustments. Elliot, did I miss anything in that? Or Doug, did I miss anything in that overview?
I just think the COG, Eric Norenberg, the new COG executive director, is looking at a two-phased approach for this, with one, the establishment of the Climate Action Sustainability Committee, and then further work over the course of this year at looking, I'm going to say holistically, but at the overall COG committee structure, and seeing if there are any other issues that, other committees that may want, that may need some adjustments. I think there's been discussion about the Parks Committee, another one that's been discussed from time to time, about, does that need to be, they've gone to meeting quarterly, so that's one of the issues.
The Parks Capital.
Parks Capital Committee, yes. Should that be changed or modified or something like that?
Right.
At this point, it's.
One other point that may or may not have any value in studying, but the committees take a certain amount of time for people, and we might want to look at what the average length of a meeting is of each of the existing committees, and see if one stands out and being so particularly long, that that would need some relief. If somebody is always going to three-hour meetings, and somebody else is always going to half-hour meetings, that might make a difference. Not necessarily that three-hour meetings are accomplishing more, because they are taking more time.
Throughout all the discussion, I definitely got the impression that the staff is very concerned about stressing elected officials who might have an overload of work, plus staff is concerned about the amount of input that they need on certain projects, and so they want to make sure that they have appropriate resources among the elected officials. So I think it's staff-driven, is my assessment, out of concern for electeds, not only with the time management, but also the efficiency, and, and the center, then COG staff getting the information that they need. So I think what we're doing here, or does anybody have any comments about any of the committees that they want to add to this discussion?
I'll just say that I agree with Mr. Norenberg's approach here. I agree that we should establish a Climate Action Sustainability Committee, and I agree that we need a comprehensive review of the remaining COG committees as well.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Well, they're just asking for comments. It's not like, do we need a motion?
Oh, you're right.
Comments and feedback, that's all they're asking for.
Well, I, in lack of a motion, I concur with your sentiments, exactly. Anyone else?
We might want, we might want to write it out, just so that, an item we bring to the executive.
I think somebody's writing out even as we speak. I think he, yes. Good point. Any other comments? So we, change is afoot. All righty. And I, yes, we're now up to the update on financial impacts. Did I miss something? Oh, I missed the communication discussion. That was an appropriate miss. So Doug, you want to lead off on that? Because I think you and.
Well, I will start and turn it over to Anita very quickly.
Perfect, yeah.
Anita had emailed me, and we talked a little bit. She had some ideas that she wanted to discuss with the rest of the board members, and then just recently, she had noted the upcoming election and noted that the county was stressing mail-in votes, and that might be an area where some of the ideas that might come out of this discussion could be used, put to use. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anita.
Perfect. Yes, Anita, take it away.
Thank you. Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you. And I enter knowing that I maybe don't have the full background of all the communication, research, and policy decision making that has already been done. My thought was that the township had identified the need to hire a part-time communications person, which has been put on hold, obviously, because of the COVID financial impact. And so my thought was, are there communication needs that we can somehow meet in this interim time without adding to the workload of the staff? And looking at items that could be communicated to the public in a short, timely fashion. One example would be the work that is being started now on Valley Vista Shared Use Trail, which is an obvious effort that drivers might wonder about, and what the procedure would be to use some free media to communicate very briefly, even with a picture, if need be, that this work has started and it'll take however long it'll take, and it's being funded with a grant. Part of the purpose of the communication also is to build up, I think, an appreciation in the township of how well, and I do believe how well the township is managing tax dollars and serving the needs of the public. Because as we look ahead, we know with declining tax revenues, there may come a time where the township will need to possibly consider raising taxes. And at that point, the degree of trust that the residents have, that the township has been transparently communicating all along on the good things the township has done. So I will confess my ignorance in terms of knowing what research may have been done before the proposal for the staff communications person was drafted, if we've looked at what other townships are doing so as not to reinvent the wheel, if what our current staff thinks are the important needs of communication. Again, I am not proposing that this be an added workload for the staff, who I think is doing a wonderful job with the resources that they have. So the Valley Vista project is one, the urging of our citizens to vote by mail, which is not just our patent township thing, that's a COG concern and a county concern, but within our township, how can we take the measures we need to, to protect our poll workers? And the county has urged all citizens who are able to apply for voting by mail, and if they don't, how can we encourage the wearing of masks? So, but again, these are communication issues, and I would offer suggestions on, and with input from staff, on how we might continue communication, which might be increasing in need for these times.
Well. I, I think the main things we were looking for, for the, the communications person, I probably, if you wanted to look at a model, it'd be try Ferguson Township, some of the things that they're doing with their communications person. Probably the main thing would be a more or less an electronic newsletter that would go out on a far more frequent basis than our, than our written one. I think there's still, I think, because we, we put some, very important things about things you need to do at your property in the written newsletter that goes out to every residential address, I think we still need to keep doing that. But there's a lot more information we could put out on a more frequent basis than a electronic newsletter. The other aspect would be probably increase the, our presence on social media, probably expand from Facebook into things like Twitter, which is beyond me. I can do Facebook. And then probably do, we were in the process of looking at websites to transfer, to, to move to, and then probably the new person would be in charge of keeping that, that website fresh, more fresh than the current one, and working on more engagement issues. I don't know if you've been on the Borough website lately, but they've, they've got some citizen engagement tools that they use on quite a regular basis, and they've actually putting quite a bit of staff time towards engagement, which we could start doing in a, you know, in a part-time fashion. So those are the things that really look to, is take what we're doing now and just do it much, much bigger and better. In the interim, I mean, if people wanted to put together some information, it's, you know, it's the compiling the information, going out, taking the photographs, putting together a little bit of, of, of text or, you know, the story, and maybe then finding a couple of links online. If, if people were, could go and put that information together and kind of package it up in a, you know, a one-page Word doc or something. Some, things like that then are very easy to upload to either, to the website or, you know, take pieces of those and put those on Facebook. So those are things that could be done.
Do we have anybody with journalistic expertise on this board?
I would be pleased to volunteer, yes.
I was hoping you would, thank you. And I could even have my arm twisted over the phone.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it just, you know, the stuff doesn't need to be elaborate or anything, but you're right. It just, you know, if you can get a couple of pictures, put together a little copy, and, you know, if there's information, you know, it's, it's then going to the website, somebody else's website, finding a link and providing that back in there that usually, doesn't take a lot of time, but it does take time to do.
Yep. I will say that Jessica Buckland and Larry Pager and I formed a little committee. Larry did most of the work because it was researching the different websites and cost and update arrangements. And Jessica and I talked a little bit about content. I started a little bit about content, but lacked the time and discipline, I guess, to write it out. So that can be put on a front burner at some point, but as Doug said, the key is the words, right? And the, the format will come. A couple of formats that, or outlets that I had thought of, or Doug, that are out there. The Nextdoor Park Forest, which you mentioned in an email, I believe, to me. I love the idea about the Valley Vista with photographs being put on Nextdoor Park Forest. I monitor that and frequently answer questions from people because of my knowledge as a supervisor. The other obvious one is the electronic billboard, which I think we used recently for the, I think, the bank nearby, and you put up a COVID, put up some.
Well, that's, well, PennDOT has.
And PennDOT?
Yeah, for public messages, we can do that. We don't have our own electronic billboard.
No, but is it Fulton Bank? But we, I thought they put up Sun Message for us at some point.
I don't know where that is.
Okay. Yeah, so any, any way we communicate is, is as good as the people who are drawn to that particular outlet.
I mean, if somebody wants to look into Nextdoor, I think there's a way to get an agency, I'm going to say membership, because I don't know what it's called.
Oh, okay.
I, I remember hearing about, I look at Nextdoor just to kind of keep track of what's going on. And I, I don't think I've ever replied or anything into, but it's, it's a good, like you said, it's a good tool to see what people are talking about. But if, if somebody wanted to look and see if there's a, a way to get an agency presence on there, that might, you know, we could, that might be a way, an easy way to expand our, our footprint.
And if that's the case, if Anita or I wrote content, we would have to pass it by the township official?
Well, we can, we can, we can talk about that too. But I mean, if somebody just goes to, to Nextdoor and see what saves for a, an agency to become, you know, have, have their own presence or anything on there, that, that might be a way to, like I said, and we'd get more than just Nextdoor, because there's Nextdoor in Park, in Tothrees, and there's Nextdoor out in Amblewood, and there's, there's Nextdoors all over the place.
Grace Woods, I think, has been, right. Okay, great. Anita, would you be interested in doing that?
Oh, very much, very much. I would also be curious to know how people receive their information, that maybe even a short survey of the people who serve on our many patent township committees. Where do they look for information?
Something we could, staff could put together a little survey.
That's a great idea.
That we could circulate. That's a good idea to find out, yeah.
Because I'm finding, I look at statecollege.com online now, they seem to be posting, for instance, the daily updates on the COVID infections. I mean, they, to get information out very quickly, whereas I think the Center Daily Times has major resourcing problems. But yeah, where do folks, where do folks look?
Yeah. Yeah, the perennial question. Elliot, yes?
Well, the methods we've talked about are passive ones, where you've got to log into the place you're interested in and find the information. But, and I don't know if, if we want to do this, but you can also do push notifications, where people who agree to receive those, whenever a message comes out, we push it to them, and so they automatically get that. And that, that's done by some companies. It can be pretty annoying if you agree to something and then later you want to turn it off, and I think you can. But say if you're always in, in a particular issue, you can look into the, the, the push notification, where we have a message, we want people to get it, and we do that.
Yeah, that's, that's how I give my Nextdoor name, as emails. That's the way I normally get them. But no, that's a good idea, Elliot, we can look into that too.
And that's something that we might.
Final question.
Go ahead.
Has there ever been any discussion of putting together an e-newsletter like Ferguson Township does, which?
Yeah, that's one of the, the new person would be, that would be one of their new, their first task, once we get the new person online, or if somebody else wants to start putting together. I, I don't know how to do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's great. And I, I remember Anita mentioned to me, sort of catching people in the act of good, a good deed, especially under the COVID malaise. And one, one was the Home Depot donating, I believe.
N95.
The N95. N95, I always get that number.
Well, they turned out they're the industrial ones, not the medical ones.
Oh, okay.
We can use them, but there's only, yeah, people in the medical field can't use those.
But certainly we could do it on a, a trial basis and tell people we're doing a, a mini e-newsletter, it could be sporadic.
We have email lists, we, you know.
Yeah, right. So we can use that.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have some fairly substantial email lists that people, we send things out when we have information, but like I said, we don't do a normal e-newsletter type of thing.
Right.
It's mostly when we get info, we, mostly information we're passing on from other agencies every once in a while.
One more, one more question.
Yes, please.
Supervisor Abrams for COG. Is COG talking about kind of a publicity push to encourage vote by mail registration because people need to request those in, in May? Or is this something like if our supervisors just even passed a simple resolution encouraging people to do it, that would be the basis of writing a letter to the editor? But I know we're just one township. I wondered if there was any talk about it happening more at the regional or county level?
Well, A, I have not heard you talk about it, but B, it's a good idea. And if I remember to do that, so I'm going to write it down, I can bring it up at the COG exec meeting next week, it'll still give people enough time to do that. And also, I had a historic perspective on the, the shared use path, that when Valley Vista drivers put in, there was a conscious effort not to allow any sidewalks there, because it was just about the only township road that did not have sidewalks. And in fact, that's why there were so few connections to Valley Vista Drive, Douglas Drive, and Coldestack, just before you get to Valley Vista. And only in recent years have, has that been allowed, but now that we're going to have a bike and parking path, maybe it's best that it isn't done that way, because it's going to be done specifically to, for safety, bike riders and walkers, which wouldn't have been done in the first place.
Interesting.
Yeah, I will just say as far as, in, in terms of Valley Vista Shared Use Path, we have been communicating with residents who live along there on a regular basis, and I think they, you know, so they understand, and I, you know, you don't, we don't need to re-message them, but the, the messaging would be to other folks, as Anita said, who drive along there and wonder what's going on, so.
Related to raising awareness of vote by mail and encouraging the use of vote by mail, question for the administration here, what does it cost to put out a postcard to every single resident?
Fifty cents a person, fifty cents an address.
Okay, fifty cents times how many people, so?
Uh, six thousand.
Okay. So. Three thousand dollars, thank you, Deanie. And when is our, our printed newsletter?
It's already gone out.
That's right, it's the one for the spring, or I think it came out of March, did it?
Yeah.
So, and the deadline for registration is what, May 27th to register by?
Yeah, I don't know that we, you need to come up with your own program. I think if you're just supporting, you know, supportive of the county's efforts.
For sure.
And also respecting that there are people who probably want to vote in public.
True.
In person too, so.
True, true.
Well, I'm wondering if we could just pass a simple motion tonight urging all citizens to consider voting by mail as a way of protecting our poll workers in this time of virus. And after doing that, that could be a note to put in Nextdoor Park Forest, to send to statecollege.com, to write a letter to the Center Daily Times.
Why don't you make the motion?
Pardon me?
Why don't you make the motion?
I, so move. I move that patent township, oh, help us, Doug, you're good at wording, that patent township supervisors encourage all residents to apply for voting by mail for the June 2nd primary as a way of protecting our poll workers in this time of virus crisis.
Is that, do we need an, an official resolution, the wherefor and therefore and?
No, you just do it by motion.
Okay, sorry.
It's just an expression of support.
Great. So we don't need to be the official wording? We have, do we have a second for that?
Hereby, second.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought so, usually. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Great, good.
Thank you.
Yep. So a resolution is worth nothing unless it's promoted and put out there, so I like your idea of a letter to the editor and any other way of promoting it, like on Nextdoor Park Forest, which would be excellent. So can we direct staff to get something officially written up?
We'll take care of that.
As soon as possible?
Yeah, we'll take care of that and distribute it to the board members.
Thank you so much. I think we're on to, and thank you for bringing up that discussion, Anita, that was, was great. And you'll, we, we, we can talk offline, some communication ideas. We're up to the money. We're talking about the financial impact related to the COVID-19 pandemic, and I'll turn it over to the amazing Larry Pager, who is our Director of Finance and Administration.
All right, so.
All right, so I am looking at the, the numbers on a pretty regular basis to, so that we can catch any time we start seeing the numbers trending down. As of today, we are not seeing any, any major effects revenue-wise from COVID-19. The, the real estate taxes are coming in a little bit better than they have in, in the past. The first quarter earned income tax is on par with where it should be. However, the second quarter, I would expect we're going to see some drops. Penn State is now, instead of paying their full salary to the people, they're furloughing them half-time, so they'll only pay them part-time. We're going to, in the second quarter, see more, you know, people that are getting paid through the hospitality industry, which is a big industry for us. So I would expect that as the second quarter goes along, we're going to see, especially in their income tax and LST tax, a decrease. We'll see small decreases in other areas, like, like Chief Jolly was saying, they're not paying any, they're not writing any parking tickets or, you know, but they're relatively small lots. My main concern will be with earned income tax and LST tax.
We won't have those final numbers until the end of July, right?
Right, because most of the, the employers will pay on a quarterly basis, so their second quarter won't be due until July 31st. So we really won't be, see it until, you know, sometime in the middle of August. But I'm continuing to monitor how much we're getting from the monthly, the people who follow EIT and LST on a monthly basis with Center Tax Agency, so I'm monitoring those numbers. On the expense side, where's, you know, where we have not furloughed anybody at the, at the township. We paid everybody for COVID leave, which to date, we are, as of last Monday, which was a payday, or last Thursday, which was a payday, we paid about $107,000 out in COVID leave pay. Those are the people that were home, but were not working from home. So we're, we're looking at ways to, to get repaid. There's some, some ways that we can get paid from FEMA, not for any of the COVID leave pay, but for some of our other expenses, our PPED expenses, you know, our clean-in-the-office expenses, those types of things, though those expenses aren't nearly as high. So we're hoping, you know, something comes through that will, you know, target local municipalities to help them pay for maintaining their employees through this crisis. So that's where we stand. So at this point in time, hopefully, you know, we'll have better information. It's going to be obviously tough on us come budget season. So I'm starting to do the work on financial trends monitoring that will, that will look at this summer, and so we'll talk about some forecasting matters.
We're back to full employment at this point.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention that. So not this week, but last week, we got back to full employment. Everybody's back to work, with the exception of those people that have to take care of loved ones that, you know, obviously, which goes not being hard. Sometimes you can't get a babysitter, sometimes you,
Yeah, but we haven't had any cases of-
No cases of COVID-19.
And no cases of exposure, so.
No cases of exposure, we're not hoping that's right. So we're, we've been in, in good shape that way, so.
That's great.
I'll take any questions, if anybody has any questions.
So I'm just assuming you'll keep us updated on this every meeting?
I'm going to update you at every meeting.
And in between?
Be assured that I'm looking at it.
Okay, I'm sure you're-
As the money comes in, I'm comparing it to what we got last year at this point.
There is another bill in front of Congress.
Right.
There was an action alert that came out from Pennsylvania Municipal League. Encourage folks to reach out to our senators and our congressmen, and I encourage them to provide relief directly to municipalities.
Yeah.
Who've been left out up to date.
And if they, if they tell you that the CARES Act did have money in for municipalities, the CARES Act only addressed municipalities with populations greater than 500,000 people at the last census, which equals less than 20 in the whole country.
Yeah, okay.
That does not help us.
Yeah.
I don't even think if we threw the whole Center Region on a football Saturday with pets, that we'd get that much, so.
I, I called the two senators and our congressperson today, and when I called Glenn Thompson's office, they actually wanted to know my contact information as a supervisor. So I gave that email, but when I called both times, I said I'm calling as a citizen and as a supervisor in my township. So the link is on the email that Doug sent us. It's real easy to do, so I encourage everyone to do it, and maybe even get our friends to do it, even though they're not supervisors. So, great, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're great. Thank you, Larry. Any, any questions for Larry? Comments? Okay, and we're now on to the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
And, okay, a second for that? Oh, wait, I've got to look for it. Does somebody want to second the move to, okay.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, I think Elliot got his hand up first, so Elliot's a second. Any discussion? Okay, I actually have a point. I'd like to pull one of the items, the minutes. Is that, do I do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. And then do we have to talk about the minutes right now?
Yeah, you may as well, just because there's only two items.
Okay, the, the only question, the only question I have, and I did, I forgot to respond to Doug's email earlier, but I did text everybody, because I don't think I heard back from Elliot. I just want everybody to, if you can pull up those minutes, to take a look at the committee assignments and make sure that they're correct. I think I heard from Dan. They look correct to me, that Dan says, Anita says they look correct. So just Pam and Elliot, if you have a chance to look over those when you get to them, let Doug know.
Okay.
I, I, I think they're fine, but it's very complicated.
Yeah, I went back and listened. Hopefully, I got it right, so.
But I noticed that you made a mistake on page seven. So that's why I thought I would double-check. We'll get to that when we get to page seven, though, don't worry. Okay. It's, it's tough, this committee reassignment.
And what's the correction on page seven?
The correction on page seven, not of the minutes, but sorry, of the agenda.
Oh, oh, the agenda.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, that being said, now where do I proceed? Do I ask for an approval of the minutes?
You can do it either way. I mean, you didn't, there, we really, nobody made any change to the minutes, so they're as they were presented, so you could just-
So I think we can actually vote on the, vote on the motion, which is that we accept the two items in the consent agenda. Those in favor of the consent agenda, consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, so we can move on to the manager's report, so.
Yeah, just a couple of updates. Included a letter that had gone out to several members of Congress, specifically talking about college towns, university towns in the country, and the impact COVID has had on the census issues. State College PA was one of the highlighted ones. So there's a, there's a, an effort going on between the National League of Cities, International Town and Gown Association, and ICMA reaching out and suggesting that, you know, that, that the feds keep, keep this open, and we may need to make some unprecedented adjustments, is the way they, they classified it. So that, I mean, I'm sure that issue will, will stay at the forefront of what we're, things we're talking about. The, there's an MPO issue that we did get a notice that the Transportation Improvement Plan, the TIP, is open for public comment, and there is a meeting scheduled for May 20th, so there was some information on that. The development update from the planning commission was included. If there are any questions, I'll answer those. And then just bulk trash collection is back on the calendar. It's next week, so have your stuff out as soon as possible by 7:00 a.m. on your day of collection. I need to, if you're not, if you're not sure what can go out, there's guidance both on the, there's guidance on the COG website under Refuse and Recycling Residential Trash, or just search for bulk waste, and you should be able to find it. And then as we've discussed, primary election is on June 2nd. End of my report.
Do you want to talk about the North Atherton Street project update? Just occurred to me. We just got notice of it.
Just PennDOT came, our, our, the work's going to restart on North Atherton Street, down by the university. Got a notice of that today from PennDOT, so keep your eyes open when you're in that, so.
Yeah, it's just the Curtain Road intersection.
Yeah, and we're starting in there. I can't, I didn't read the whole issue, but there's more work to be done this spring. I think there's paving that ends up being done, and then, I don't know, in the fall or next year, they start more on, more storm drain work down below College Avenue. I know there's-
On South Avenue.
When they're working between College and Beaver, it should be pretty exciting, so. Not in a good way.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. That brings us to committee reports, and we'll start with, in, in orders listed here. I know we've got the Finance Committee that was added in, in an update to the agenda. So we'll start with Transportation and Land Use, and that would be Supervisor Rob.
Let me first say Nicole did an outstanding job on her report to the TLU Committee. Our chair is Teresa Latcher, and CRPA prepared a, a report, summarized the information collected and a preliminary result of that report. It was stated that many, many of the rental market at that time, like the property managers, landlords, and building managers, building owners are struggling with the issue of the COVID-19 crisis. Many of the owners that had student-oriented, multi-family units have made substantial improvement to retain students. Transitioning from student-oriented rentals to affordable housing is complex and at discretion of the building owner.
Nope.
We lost your video, we lost your sound, Pam.
It's frozen.
Ah, yeah.
Moving, moving forward, the CRPA has been fairly comprehensive data, except that they can be updated on a regular basis to keep the information current. We had a committee member who was concerned that the focus was on student housing instead of workforce, but that was addressed by this particular report was focusing on student-oriented housing. Looking forward, the committee agreed that they want to use this opportunity to address affordable housing issues, and decided to continue to move forward on this survey and report while addressing the concerns to Nicole, like I said, she did an outstanding job on her report to, to the committee.
Lost audio.
And appointed officials, kind of brought us up to speed to what particular program was about. Because of the many projects, CRPA has decided to focus on three major projects that are undergoing beginning in 2021. One of the, one of the three projects that they'll be working on is the Completion Act 532 plan. The second one was the Initiation of the Center Region Comprehensive Plan Update. And the third is to implement, the implementation of the Center Region Climate Action Program. On the completion of the Act 537, that study included Meek Lane Pump Station. Second one was the Scott Road Pump Station at Bristol Avenue Interstate Door. The third was the Beneficial Reuse of Service Area Designation Project, and the fourth was the Nutrient Management, Management Special Study. Okay, after the review, they were working on, the third one, the third was the information, the information of the Center Region Climate Action and Adaptation. They were informed that Pam did an outstanding job on her report, and Pam got an opportunity to speak briefly, but it seemed that her tour to all the townships on, on this project got excellent accolades from all townships. Also, that she also has the community support for this project. I think we all agree to, now hold one second, we, we all agree- We, we all agree.
Yeah, just lost her.
Yeah.
Runs up again.
Okay. Things, oh. We also spoke on, hold on. They also spoke on the CCMPO Public Comment, that whole draft on 2021 to 2024. It will be, it was advised to do a public comment period in early May, a virtual public meeting, well timed schedule, May 20th, at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m.
That's one you mentioned, right? Yeah.
We also talked about phase four, to contact the House and Senate that will be voting on the four phases of the Energy Relief Fund. And it was encouraged that we support a letter that we sent out from all townships, because that funding will help small businesses in all our towns. And that seems to be.
Thank you very much. We had trouble hearing a lot of that report, Pam, because the, the connection might have been a little staticky. So put a lot of work into that. Thank you. No, just want to let you know if we have questions, it's because we couldn't hear some parts of it. So thank you, thank you so much. And now, what's your, we're going on to ad hocs committee. Larry, anything to add?
So at the ad hoc committee, which was, which was done over Zoom, we talked about the project updates. They first talked about Millbrook Marsh, which is coming along. I'm not sure, they say they had everything open, or they had anything open yet?
No, they, the, they finished the repair work on the short section of boardwalk, and they reopened that section.
That was it. The other was the Code Office renovation, which is going to be a couple months behind, two to three months behind due to the closing down of, of nonessential businesses. Then we went on to talk about the Facilities Committee Visioning Exercise. So everybody had turned in their, their homework, and they're going to put them together for our next meeting. And hopefully we'll, we'll be able to come up with a vision statement, et cetera, from that, over time. They issued a really nice report on a summary of the COG facilities and whether they're owned, who they're owned by, if COG is renting them, who, how much we're paying, when, when the leases run on. So that gave us a good overview of all the facilities that COG has and who owns them and where we might need to do some work to get some, some agreements in, in writing that, that don't exist. And finally, we talked about preparation for the Facilities Coordinator and what need, what, what we should have ready for him when he lands in his position.
Or her.
What's that?
Him or her.
Yeah.
Yeah, him or her, I'm sorry.
No, that's right. It's common, common sense. The Facilities Report, is that available on the COG website, do you think? Should anybody be so inclined?
I don't know if it's available on the COG website, but anybody so inclined can email me and I'll send them a copy of it.
It sounds like a great addition. It's certainly the base that you need.
It was a nice report.
Yeah, yeah. The base that you need to move forward. Okay. And Ms. Tees, reporting on Human Resources.
Yes. The Human Resources Committee met for 90 minutes via Zoom. Some of the members had not heard of Supervisor Jessica Buckland's resignation. And they expressed how much they missed her and how much they appreciated her. And Jessica, if you're watching this on CNET, know that you made a tremendous impact. And that was spoken of at the Human Resources Committee. The items that the committee addressed included the COVID-19 update in regard to personnel. And decisions and discussions are being made on furloughing employees at this closed Center Region Library. There was a separate email about that that we received. And also at the Center Region Parks and Recreation. The Human Resources Committee expressed support that moves are being made to do furloughing rather than layoffs, since furloughed employees will retain their health insurance through COG. And they're also eligible for expanded unemployment compensation. And it was noted that, under the yellow conditions of the opening of the county, that inspections have been done for new construction work with a remote drop-off for documents and appropriate social distancing, some folks apparently doing work from their vehicles. There was approval by the Human Resources Committee of reclassification of the Program Coordinator Job Description for Millbrook Marsh, moving that from exempt to non-exempt. And this means, as you may know, that for overtime, which will be needed to be approved in advance by the Coordinator Supervisor, the person may either take overtime pay, which would be at one and one-half times the hourly rate, or compensation time, or an adjustment of their hours within the 40-hour work week. And there was also discussion of what's called the Parks Peer-to-Peer Grant Opportunity. And the Center Region Parks and Recreation Director, Pam Salagangas, am I pronouncing that right? Reported on this grant, which is operated through DCNR, the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. And the Park District will be applying for it. It's a $10,000 grant. COG will be providing 1,000 of that. And it basically provides funding to identify the best position to add in the future to the Parks Department. And that, of course, is going to depend on continued funding, both from DCNR and the Parks. The advantage of receiving this peer-to-peer grant is that it would qualify the Park District for another grant, which is called the Circuit Rider Grant, which would help to actually fund a new position. Supervisor Peter Marshall cautioned the Park District to be very cautious about adding permanent people, and Pam agreed. And the earliest that the Circuit Rider Grant would be applied for, if it came along, would be in the spring of 2021, for the COG budget of 2022. And COG would obviously be reviewing it come next spring if things come along. Two other items that the committee dealt with. A discussion ensued about needing to develop personnel policies about working from home, not just for COG employees, but maybe ultimately for township employees. And not just for this current COVID crisis, but for future times, to develop a policy about working from home. There were a number of issues that the COG Director raised, you know, what if somebody is working from home and they trip over the cat? And do you have workman compensation? And a number of different things. And so Becca Pettit, who was the COG Human Resources Officer, said she was going to be in discussions, maybe she already has, with fellow financial officers. And the new COG Director had been giving this thought as well. So that's in the works. There'll be lots of discussions and lots of drafting. But it was thought that in changing times, that there needs to be a personnel policy formalized about working from home. And finally, at the end of the meeting, and this was very sweet, the individual members of the committee took just a minute to briefly introduce themselves to me and to welcome me. And I've learned that the Human Resources Chair, who I had not known before, Nigel Wilson, has been serving since 1994, second intenior only to our own Elliot Abrams. And I asked Nigel, does he do puns also? But he said no. And I'm not surprised, since there is no one who can match the wit of Supervisor Abrams. That concludes my report.
Very funny.
Wow, that's a hard act to follow. So I'm gonna, no, so it is my turn. We are on to Public Services and Environment Committee. Two items. I'm gonna go with the easiest item first. The draft, the committee worked on the draft Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Resolution that was sent around to the municipalities. We will, we will be discussing it at our May 27th meeting. The second item, which we tackled first, was a little more difficult to even get through. UAJA was charged with putting together what's called a Task Activity Report. This is the first step in moving toward an Act 537 study. And the item under study is the Beneficial Reuse Service Area, which would then allow UAJA to provide beneficial reuse water to customers more quickly. The, the difficult part about the discussion and review of this TAR, the Task Activity Report, had to do with the difference between the Task Activity Report and the actual 537 plan. The Task Activity Report is much more broad-based because it is looking at all the ultimate options that could be done in a study. One issue that raised hackles was an issue of groundwater recharge, which in and of itself is not that bad. That would be using the beneficial reuse water for ground use, groundwater recharge. However, one of the ways of doing that did raise hackles quite a bit, and that is if you do a groundwater injection. So the UAJA does not intend to do injection in case anybody in this audience is concerned about that, but it is one of the options that's put in this Task Activity Report. So my report has ended. And we are now moving on to public safety, and then we'll conclude with finance. So we're back to Supervisor Rob.
Finance is until tomorrow, so.
Pam can report if she wants.
Unless, unless Dan can, can, could read the future.
Oh, I like that. How did I miss that?
No, it's.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm.
Ms. Rob.
Ms. Rob, you get the final say in.
Oh, okay. I thought I was waiting.
No, not exactly. Anyway, go ahead. Yeah, you do.
Can you hear me, first of all? And please, if you can hear me.
Just, just plow through it, and we'll do the best we can.
Okay. The Public Safety Report, the presenter was Chief Fair. He explained the agreement to transfer the HAZnet Program responsibility from Penn State to COG. He also explained there would be no cost to our budget. In agreement with the COG, accept the responsibility for the HAZnet as part of a regional bio-protection program for a period no less than three years. Penn State will fully fund in two years and will donate all equipment to COG. The second, Sean Kaufman talked about the Emergency Management Coordination. He presented three individuals who were a part of the Emergency Management Board. One was Scott Ralston. He's the Executive Director of Center LifeLink. Ken Noble, he's the EMS Chief of Center LifeLink EMS. And Rich Kelly, who's the Clinical Supervisor for Emergency Management Services. These emergency services all have been deeply affected by the COVID crisis, with the reductions of calls, staffing, the PPE, which is Personal Protection Equipment Shortage, and financial funding. The uncertainty of if Penn State students will return is vital for the survival of these services. For life-length payments of their services are not always paid for the service. It goes to the individual. We have a suggestion from the committee persons to write legislation to be passed that Emergency Management Services, Life-Life Link, be paid for their services as members. And each township should sign off on this letter. We also talked about the construction code and their permits and what the employees or the inspectors that were going out to make sure they were safe. Their procedures in place to protect all inspectors that go out. And that each construction company follows the guidelines to protect employees as well. The COG software was put on hold. Chief Fair also did a report on that they had two, two incidents a day. Also, Sean welcomed a new part-time Deputy GM Coordinator. His name is Derek Hoover. Mr. Hoover has background in emergency services, and he currently works part-time as Ferguson Township Wardeness Office. At the Fire Department, we also have a new hire for the summer intern named Colin Meyer. And he began to work on April 27th, 2020. Matter to record. Best wishes went out to two retirees. One with 20 years of service, his name is Arnold Pelka. He's in charge of the development management of new construction. And also two, Jeff Stack, who has 36 years of service. And was, who was replaced by Mr. Eric Nuremberg.
two, Jeff Stack, who has 36 years of service, and was, who was replaced by Mr. Eric Nuremberg, and they also welcomed him to COG. That's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. We are on to the Water Borough Authority Report. There's a very detailed report by Pat Montieth, that it was enclosed, Other Things Do Not Meet, the CCMPO, Mr. Manager, Item E.
Oh.
It is not Abrams and Whitman, it is Rob and, Rob and Abrams. Whatever. Okay. Just so you know. You're perfect in every other way.
Yeah, right.
Okay. I think that's it for committee reports. Any other business? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All right, a second. A second?
Second.
It froze. I'm assuming I'll second it. Okay, adjourned. There we go. Great.
Thank you.